Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. This is December 12th, 2012, a meeting, a special meeting for the Oceanside City Council, Harbor District, and CDC. Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Wood.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fowler.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Faleen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sanchez is absent.
She is at the council commission. Thank you very much. City Attorney, please, for closed session.
Thank you. The council meeting closed session to discuss one item, litigation, significant exposure to litigation in the matter of one case.
Thank you. Would you have a closed session? Thank you. My concession from closed session. Uh, city attorney, please. He's trying out.
The city council met in closed session to discuss potential litigation in the matter of one item, and I can report that the council voted three to zero with Mayor Wood recusing himself and councilwoman Sanchez absent not to appoint counsel for the mayor with respect to the validity of his ordinance, nor had, the council also voted not to seek an attorney general opinion regarding the validity of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you very much. If I may, I'll address the audience. I was trying to save the city some money by asking that they send us to the attorney general for a legal opinion, which would cost the city nothing. They didn't want to do that, I'm assuming. Secondly, if they didn't do that, I would like legal representation because I know I have a city attorney, but he would be in conflict with a voting majority. I understand that. Uh, I think there's legal issues here for this particular issue. Number one, about the rights of the mayor to appoint and remove. That being said, I have to put on the record also as we start here that I actually think this is probably inappropriate or illegal meeting tonight. I want that in the reading. Uh, the issue is you cannot have a special meeting for this issue to vote on this item. So what we have is the three other council members signed a form to put on this meeting and vote on it at the last council meeting, as you well know. They voted on this to have a special, this meeting, because on the 19th, Mr. Kern will be out of time. So I understand why they did it. However, at this particular point in time, I see that there's only one item on the agenda. That's this item regarding the powers. Well, I consider this a special meeting, only one item, and that's illegal. So I know there's an opinion from the city attorney, but that's why I wanted legal representation to address some of these concerns. I'll certainly try to fight for you, the citizens. That's my point, is that overwhelmingly you voted me to be a mayor and represent you. They seem to be circumventing that, and I'm concerned about due process for you and the public. As I also stated, it's not about me. If I'm on these committees or not, that's not an issue. It doesn't bother me. What it comes down to is, I think the citizens voted me in. I should be able to run the city as a mayor. I have very little powers over the rest of the council members, so this is one of them. With that being said, we move forward. I'm representing the citizens in what I think is right and the past, present, and future mayors of the city. The charter city came into being in Oceanside with no input from the city attorney or the city manager. It was written up by Mr. Feller and outside building industry, and then it went to the ballot and passed. I understand that. One of the biggest issues on that ballot and issues of why we changed was the PLA for unions and their representation. That has been taken care of now by the Supreme Court of the state of California, so it's not an issue. So it really comes down to, this is a power grab, and I thank you for listening to me here and at home. Thank you very much, but I see they don't want to do something that costs the city nothing and/or give me legal representation. And I thank you all for my calls, your calls, and feedback I've had over the last few weeks. With that, thank you very much, and we'll go forward. And, uh, this is supposed to be a regular meeting, so we've had the roll call. Could we go forward with the... I'm going down here. It's normally the five o'clock item. Madam Clerk, I think I want to go forward with the invocation and the pledge, if we could.
Yes, if you'd all please stand at this time. We're going to have the invocation led by our new city clerk, Zach Beck, who also happens to be the youth pastor at Gateway Community Church.
Let's power heads. Lord, we thank you for today, for this blessing of life and this blessing of the holiday season. We ask for your guidance, wisdom, discernment, and the decisions that we make and leadership that we provide to you and the citizens. We ask for your blessings upon this community and this country, and we ask that we be a blessing to you as well. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Zach, how's Manny? With that, Holly, could you do the pledge or...? Thank you.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Holly. Uh, we had closed session report, and we got items not on the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have items you want to talk about that aren't item number four, this is your opportunity, Holly.
We have none.
Thank you very much. Uh, could we go ahead and look at the, um... The items for all the council members, myself, anything for...
Um...
Thank you. I have none.
Okay, so we don't have those on the agenda. Right, that's nothing. So the link and left is item four. We have nine speakers at this point, and the city attorney will need to read the entire ordinance.
I need to read the ordinance. This is an ordinance of, adoption of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside, amending Chapter Two, Section 2.1.64, Subdivision G of the Oceanside City Code, modifying the appointment process for regional boards and commissions. Section One, Chapter Two, Section 2.1.64, Subdivision G of the Oceanside City Code is amended as follows. G. Appointments of the city's representative to a regional board or commission shall be made in the following manner. During years when there is a municipal election in November, the mayor shall present his or her nominations for all regional boards and commissions for the next year, no later than the first city council meeting in December. During years when there is no municipal election in November, the mayor shall present his or her nominations for all regional boards and commissions for the next year, no later than the second city council meeting in December. The mayor's nominations shall be subject to confirmation by majority vote of the entire city council, including the mayor. If the mayor's nominee to a regional board or commission is rejected by majority vote of the entire city council, or if the mayor does not submit nominations in the times prescribed in this section, any council member may thereafter present a nomination for appointment to a regional board or commission at a properly noted meeting, subject to confirmation by majority vote of the entire city council, including the mayor. The city's representative to a regional board or commission may be recalled by majority vote of the entire city council, including the mayor, for any reason at a properly noted city council meeting. Vacancies on a regional board or commission created by the recall of the city's representative may be filled by nomination of the mayor or any council member, subject to confirmation by majority vote of the entire city council, including the mayor. Section Two, the city clerk of the city of Oceanside is hereby directed to publish this ordinance once within 15 days after its passage in the North County Times, a newspaper of general circulation published in the city of Oceanside. Section Three, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced on the 30th day from and after its passage. Section Four, severability. If any section, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be invalid or unconstitutional by a decision of a court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. City council hereby declares that it would have passed this ordinance and adopted this Mayor, could we take a 30-second break? I need to get the second page of this, which was not on my...
30-second break.
Backside.
Where's that?
I didn't get a two-second copy, or a two-sided copy, excuse me. Any section, sentence, clause, or phrase thereof, irrespective of the fact that any one or more section, subsection, sentences, clauses, or phrases be declared invalid or unconstitutional.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, and Mr. Clerk, uh, the public, please.
Yes, we have nine speakers. Uh, may we have the first three speakers line up at the podium? First, we have Brenda Souza. Second, we have Christopher Wilson. And third, we have Jimmy Knott.
First off, good evening to everybody, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
My name is Brenda Souza, and I live in Oceanside. Merry Christmas to all. I wanted to step back a little bit and say, this would have never happened if, when they did this city charter with their developers and got it through without much publicity, we wouldn't have had a vote on it because nobody would have voted for it. And I think that was a little consideration and respect lack because they didn't do it. And now they're trying to attack the mayor with no provision of letting him be the senior person on Sandag. If you want to send somebody else, they'll go to the bottom. He listens to the people of Oceanside about roads, about every road you produced in the city council, and every road you put in Jeffries, and everything you want to do with Moral Hills. Nothing is of the people. Where are you when it comes to the people? The people want to be listened to. I think Jim Wood is Oceanside's mayor, and he needs to be respected as Oceanside's mayor, not put down by three men on this council who want to be the king. And there is no king of Oceanside. There's just a mayor of Oceanside. And I thank God we have a mayor of Oceanside that we all voted for. And I thank Zach Beck for being elected. And I'm just so happy that Jim is the mayor of Oceanside with the voice of the people. And the people speak, and they don't like the three on the council. They don't like them at all. And I have had many people come to my house and voice about these three. But if this is to be done, I hope that Jim can find a way to keep his seat on Sandag because I think that's the only way we're going to have the senior seat on Sandag and absolutely listen to the voice of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Chris Wilson, 770 Harbor Cliff Way, here in Oceanside. I hear a lot of talk about whether or not the representative on Sandag is representing the views of the majority of the council. And I think that talk is a little bit misguided because the person who represents the city on Sandag should represent the people of the city, not necessarily the city council. Uh, I, I think it's important to draw that distinction because, uh, in this case, we have a mayor who was elected clearly with more than a majority of the vote of the citizens of the people, uh, 54%, I believe, was the vote in a three-way race, which is pretty impressive. So I feel that, uh, to, to do this, to put the views of the council, even though you are elected leaders and representatives of the people, uh, over the views of someone who was elected directly by the people, to put an additional layer in the middle is just a formula for bad government. Uh, and I say this, I would be opposed to this, uh, even if the face of the council was different, if we had, uh, say, Mr. Kern sitting in the mayor's seat and a, a city council majority that was, uh, on the opposite side of a lot of these issues. So I really feel that to do this is hasty and flies in the face of the opinions of the vast majority of the electorate of the city. Uh, I, I remind you that you're, you're elected to be leaders, and leading by definition means that you're headed in the same direction as everybody else. If you're, uh, going off in a different direction, even if you're at the forefront of the vanguard, you're not leading. You're, you're a maverick. And so I would request that you be mavericks and, or be leaders and not mavericks. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. Once again, I go to process and procedure, which is under the law what has to be required and followed. And since there are only two employees that the city council hires and fires, the city manager and city attorney, I believe this is influencing the city attorney's selective decision on which segment of Article 11, Section 5 of the state constitution is being used to validate his actions, to basically subjugate and take and use to support this action. I shall read again, under the state constitution, Article 11, Section 5. It shall be competent in any city charter to provide that the city governed thereunder may make and enforce all ordinances and regulations in respect to municipal affairs, subject only to restrictions and limitations provided in their several charters. And in respect to other matters, they shall be subject to general laws. That is plain and clear, and it's reiterated in other language down below it. I can't say it any clearer than they have said it. This is what has to be followed. There has to be a charter amendment. There is no charter amendment telling the powers of the mayor in the city of Oceanside. You are violating the law if you go ahead with this. I want to make that perfectly clear. You're violating the law if you go ahead with this. And we must follow government code 4065, 40605, that says, very simple, in general law cities, where the office of the mayor is an elected office pursuant to Article 5, commencing with Section 34900 of Chapter Seven of Part One of Division Two of Title Four, the mayor, with the approval of the city council, shall make all appointments to boards, commissions, and committees unless otherwise specifically provided by statute. I have already said the statute, which is in the constitution. You are going to violate the constitution. There is no staff report with this action. There's no produced reasons for this action in writing that has been published. This is a sham deal, a form of a kangaroo court, and I do not want this city to defend your actions if you go ahead with this and use any other taxpayer funds to support your actions. If you want to do it, take it out of your political campaign treasury to do it, not out of any taxpayer money, because you're basically violating my constitution. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Linda Silas, Wendy Bravo, and Pat McFarland. You can step, step up to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Merry Christmas to everyone here as well. Thank you for hearing me. I just think that this is unnecessary, this ordinance. I think it's a waste of time. I think it's a waste of money and energy because if you go forward, people like me will be spending two hours a day in front of Ralph's getting referendum signatures. You know, I have better things to do in the holidays. So I guess, why are you doing, I know you're not able to answer my question directly, but why are you doing this now? What is the urgency? And again, just do the will of the people.
My name's Wendy Bravo. I live at 3030 Oceanside Boulevard. We've heard a lot about shovel-ready projects. I'd like to set that aside a moment and talk about a demolition project, and let's call a spade a spade. Everyone knows one city council does not, the city council block does not a city majority make, yet an alarming and highly patronizing post-election insult pervades. We see ordinance spokesmodel Gary Faleen voguing the press with strangely convenient redefinitions of majority rule. Gary Faleen is engaged in creative advertising, repackaging unpopular projects into popular ones. This redefinition of majority rule, combined with the misrepresentation of road building as a popular project here in Oceanside, belies a fragrant disregard, it is fragrant too, for Oceanside's voter intelligence and governmental integrity. Together with questionable practices regarding hasty dispense of administrative protocols, it suggests that our charter is being toyed with for bald political gain. We should all become alarmed when a charter becomes a mere convenience to serve any block that seeks to subsume ordinary deliberations of government so that ill-intentioned concerns can quickly advance. The proposed ordinance has grave consequences, a heritage of governmental breakdown. It strips Oceanside's defense against unconscionable maneuvering by a series of hit-and-run city council blocks over the course of time. The ordinance would render Oceanside to an uncaptained future, exposed to smash-and-grab opportunism. The ordinance lays bare Oceanside as a sort of rapacious plunder and political piracy of hit-and-run development, schemes, and a sort of boondoggles already sprawling down California's coastal cities. We want something better for Oceanside. We want Oceanside to stand apart as a haven for tourists seeking the unsullied California, one where coastland majesty went back through our agricultural heritage. Oceanside is California's last stand, and we stand against any block that would wrest our town away from us. A system of checks and balances in place to protect majority interests, and apparently this council block seeks to countermand that. They seek to usurp ordinary deliberation. Their contrivance is a fast track to nowhere. Theirs is a heritage of government shorn of majority will, a mockery of democracy. We have seen the breakdown of other cities where blocks have been so interfered, have interfered so. Kern, Feller, and Faleen want to put Oceanside on the same fast track to nowhere, and you, sir, and sirs, are bringing us down the highway to Bell.
My name is Patricia McFarland. I live at 3538 Fairblossom Drive. I voted for Mayor Wood, and I, I did so because I thought he was doing an able job. I moved here in 2010. I've attended some of your meetings and watched and listened to how each one of you behaves, and on the basis of that, have formed my opinions. I think that the mayor deserves the support that we showed at the ballot box, and that he needs the respect of the, of the board or the council, as well as of the citizens, and that this is a foolish and unwise act. And I think it's foolish and unwise because it's taking time, it's taking energy, it's taking money that could be better spent for the welfare of this town. There's lots of work that you all have to do. It's a poor start for a new inauguration. You're just starting a new cycle, and you're starting it by disagreeing with one another in a way that is not helpful. Uh, I really think you should reconsider this, and I'm very disappointed that it is going the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
With the next three speakers, please come to the podium. We have Holly Morton, Linda Walsh, and Eleanor Moore.
Hi, I'm Holly Morton, 200 North El Camino Real. I think you already know that I don't agree with this for all the reasons that I stated before, and now I'd like to ask a question, and I would really like an answer to it. It's not rhetorical. I'd like you to answer the question when it's time to speak, and that is, what is the yank? Why are we in such a big rush to do this right this minute? So much so that people are taken away from their work and their Christmas activities to come out here and have this discussion at this time? What is the big gigantic rush? Mr. Kern? Mr. Faleen? Mr. Feller? I mean, why are we in such a huge hurry to do this? If I were to answer my own question, I'd have to say, you guys are beginning to make Machiavelli look like an amateur. You know, we're not happy with it. And it's not just the nine people that are up here speaking. You know, we represent hundreds and hundreds of people who are saying, why are you doing this? And we can't even get Mr. Kern to, to pay attention to what we're saying. Only nine people. He's too busy writing what he's going to say. We don't like this. We're suggesting strongly that you reverse it. Give it time for proper discourse. Don't waste the city's money anymore. We're tired. We want you to stop it. Good afternoon.
Pull the mic down a little bit, please. Thank you.
Linda Walsh, 151 Robbie Lane, Oceanside. I think we had all hoped that we were going to start off this new year with Mayor Wood in office and with a more congenial spirit of cooperation among us all. And clearly, that's not going to happen, and that's really a travesty of our political system. I mean, Jimmy is right. We, all of us have looked into this on a legal basis. This is going to violate political process. If every time somebody lost an election, they could simply turn around and vote to strip their opponent of the powers of office, that violates democratic process, and the people won't stand for it. I mean, everybody's been dragged through this for the last couple of years, and people are angry. And to the voters that are listening, I would just like to say that Mayor Woods brought millions of dollars to the city of Oceanside. Sandag representatives, if you look at their websites, are mayors of other cities or their appointees. Why is Oceanside trying to do that differently than everybody else? Oh, Sandag gives credit for seniority, and Mayor Wood is a senior member. Oceanside gets five votes on Sandag. The city of San Diego gets 25, and the county gets another 25, and all the other cities get their votes. So if it's a big surprise to anybody that Oceanside doesn't always get their projects through, then that's news to us. You claim that we're not getting the funds we need for the Melrose extension. The neighborhoods don't want Melrose. They don't want Rancho Del Oro. Ask the people who live there. They'll tell you, they don't want their homes taken by eminent domain, and they don't want to lose Kwahomi Park. They're fed up with this. Sandag only approves shovel-ready projects, and Melrose and RDO do not qualify. Sandag also just received a court ruling against their 40-year plan, which will now go through the appellate and Supreme Court systems. Funds are going to be tied up in litigation for years to come, some estimate as much as 16 years. So nothing is going to change by doing this. This is simply sour grapes and a power grab.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Eleanor Moore. I live at 276 North El Camino Real. I'm here today to express my disapproval of the actions proposed by the majority council. Mr. Kern, Mr. Feller, Faleen, I am opposed to your actions of trying to strip the mayor of his powers. This is wrong. I think it's vindictive. I think it's, it's a big power grab because you can't accept the fact that you lost. Mr. Kern, you lost. So why not accept it and go on? The mayor won with over 54% of the vote. You're continuing to disregard the wishes of the people and the citizens of Oceanside, and it's going to have to stop. It's bad for Oceanside. It's bad for all of us, and it makes you look terribly bad. So you need to realize, you lost. So give it up. Thank you. That's all the speakers.
Thank you very much. Back to the council, Councilwoman Faleen.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know, I guess, just, you know, we're kind of going through the same ground here, but I think there's some important points that need to be made. Uh, one is, the proposal I'm making is exactly how the city of San Marcos currently appoints all their members to regional boards and commissions, so it's not anything that's new. Two, since the, uh, since this ordinance was suggested on November 28th and the city attorney was asked to draft it up, the people who are opposed to the ordinance have not brought forth a single actual case or precedent to reference that conflicts with the opinion that our city attorney has made regarding the legitimacy of the ordinance or the rationale in which it is deemed, um, you know, legal and acceptable. So, you know, all we have are assertions and conjectures, but no cases or precedents, which is why we don't need to go to the attorney general to get a letter because there's nothing to resolve. There's only one opinion that's on the table, and that's our city attorney's opinion based on actual laws and cases and precedents. on actual laws and cases and precedents. Third, no city has ever paid for an attorney to sue the city. I don't think we want to be the first to set that precedent. So that basically, you know, explains, you know, I think in terms of concluding this. Now, you know, the latest assertion is somehow the legitimacy of this meeting. The meeting, as was mentioned some of the time, is a regular meeting, a regular meeting that was scheduled according to the law by a special meeting that was held last Wednesday, and the intent of setting up this meeting today was announced two weeks ago on November 28th, and it was to accommodate the needs of Councilman Kern, who was not able to attend the December 19th meeting. As to why the timeframe of the ordinance, the reason for that was on the front page of the local newspaper, so it's hardly a secret for anyone who picks up the newspaper. You know, so I think that kind of sums up where we're at here, and I think the issue, you know, the mayor won an impressive election, and I congratulate him. I can only hope I would do as well someday, running an election. But that election gave him one vote out of five on the city council. Esther Sanchez also had a great election day. As a result, she won one vote on the city council. Now, you know, there are always winners and losers in every election, but somehow, I don't know that we lost the election when we have three votes, so I don't understand that logic. Unfortunately, we do seem to have the same nine people who believe that two votes run the city. Well, two votes don't run the city. We elected a mayor. We did not elect a king. And so we feel, you know, certainly I feel, and the votes that have taken place since, feel that when it comes to appointing fellow council members to regional boards and commissions, that the council as a whole should have more of a say in that process. And the issue of where we're appointing third-party members to commissions and city boards and commissions, that the process remains unchanged. So, you know, we've all hashed out the details for this before, so I urge my colleagues to vote yes for the ordinance. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to move that we adopt the ordinance.
A second. A second. Councilmember Feller.
Pardon me. One thing I'd like to know, this is not a special meeting. This is a regular meeting.
That's correct. It is a regular meeting.
Okay. And from the city attorney, are we breaking the law?
No, as I've said at the two prior meetings, this is, in my opinion, a policy issue. The council could continue to have mail-in appointments, as it's been doing under our current ordinance and our city council policy 110. I've looked at this issue and believe that the proposed amendment is legal as well. So it's a policy issue for the city council to decide.
Thank you. The, in what you've read is, the mayor still has the ability to appoint, the council has the ability to change that, if I understand that.
The proposed ordinance says that the mayor comes in with his appointments to regional boards and commissions. If any of those are not accepted by the council, then any councilman can thereafter, at a properly noticed meeting, nominate a candidate to a regional board and commission. That would require majority approval.
Sending people to the bottom is what we've done here, starting back, you know, probably a long time ago, but Melba Bishop, Don Roode, Nancy York did it to a most senior Larry Bagley in 91, when he was to be chair of Sandag. And it's exactly what Terry Johnson, Carol McCauley, and Betty Harding did in 96, 97, when Dick Lyon was to become chair of the Transportation Committee. And it's exactly what Jim Wood, Esther Sanchez, Sherri Macken did to me, and in this case, all three of those are for the city of Oceanside. They removed me as chair of NCTV, and they took me off of the Executive Committee at Sandag in San Diego, and that was in June of 2005. After June 26th of 2005, Oceanside could no longer vote for their own appointment. So even if we had had the opportunity, which if the rules were in play that are in place as of March 12th this year, we could have removed Mayor Wood several times during that last seven years. But as of March 2012, FPPC passed a rule stating you could vote for your own appointment. So this is simply something that's important to Oceanside to keep everything moving. I know we, as a city, still have strong relationships with all of the communities down south, and I believe that we, as a city, deserve better representation at Sandag.
Ladies and gentlemen, a couple of things, I will. Some of the difference that were brought up here. I'm not going to get angry. I've been here for a while as your mayor. Yes, I'm popular, and I know that, and that's not ego, as I try to go along with what the neighborhoods and the people want. That's why I'm popular, and I'm not sure this council does the same thing. Long speech and trying to make it shorter is that Mr. Fellain went to the city manager and said, I could stay on Sandag if I appointed two of them to the subcommittees. So my point is, if I go along with this, I can stay on Sandag. It's not worth it to me to be able to compromise future mayors and what they do. And I'll ask him that question in a little while, because I think it's important. The other thing is that the difference in the past that Mr. Feller brought up where people were removed, the difference really truly is the number of votes and how popular they were in the election. That's the difference. Some other people were removed that I'm popular and got a high vote number. Remember a while back in Proposition F, that no one could get on the council unless they got over 50% of the vote? That's why they wanted a June runoff before they had Novembers. And so far that I know of, I've been able to get over 50% every time, and that's what they want, and I keep getting it. They don't, but I do, and I know that's a factor that comes into play. The other one, I'm uncomfortable about bringing this up, and I will, because Mr. Feller brought it up. I can't speak for the preview one, but there's a reason why I removed Mr. Feller from his position on NCTV and Sandag, is that I went and talked to the people at both those locations and started saying, Mr. Feller wasn't a great representative for the city of Oceanside, and everybody indicated that. I thought somebody else could do more than just show up to get the stipend that you get paid to show up at. So we did that in the best interest too. They're going to use the same thing in the best interest of the city. They'll probably remove me. And believe me, ladies and gentlemen, this is not about me. It's about you. They do it, they do. There's a legal opinion down there, and if it changes, that'll change, and we'll go through that. But you're right, a couple of you spoke. How much time after money do we want to spend of our citizens' time to fight this issue for a new year? I guess it's going to go forward. I know the vote will go to. I certainly talked to some legal people. They don't agree totally, but like I say, I'm not a lawyer, and that's why I said, let's let the Attorney General make an opinion that might save us some money. Gee, that's unreasonable. They said, no. Well, then, I can't really get a legal opinion. I'm not a lawyer. I wanted some input other than the city attorney, who's under the rule of the voting majority. I understand that. My trust is opinion, but like I say, my city manager and my city attorney can both be fired by three votes. Might be an impact, I doubt it, but there's always that thought in the back of your mind. So it does concern me about some of these issues that are coming up. With that, we'll go forward and try to do it. I guess I'll have to try to seek legal counsel, some other place to have a court rule that they have to give me legal representation or not, or get the Attorney General to give her opinion, or what I hate to see happen is a referendum regarding, number one, to change this, or a referendum to recall somebody, or votes to change the city of Oceanside back to a general law city. And I'm sure there's people out there that work on that, and they'll probably come forward. And at that point, I don't want to hear three people up here crying the blues that the referendum and the change costs money because they brought it up. And I'm afraid that's what's going to happen down the road, is that signatures and votes will change a lot of this. And I know I get a lot of feedback from every Christmas party I go to, that generally that's the plan. With that in mind, like I say, I think it's interesting, if I go along with them, they'll leave me on Sandag. Well, I'm not willing to buy into that, because I'm not going to do that, play that game. The other one is, ladies and gentlemen, I said this before and I'll say it again, Sandag as it sits now is not the same Sandag as last year, or this last year we had. You see, a lot of cities throughout the county have changed their representation. I think you'll see a big surprise at Sandag and who they'll be dealing with, and I think they'll be a little surprised. With that, the 2030, 2050 plans are being in effect. If you think you're going to change that money around, I think you'll be surprised. It's pretty well tightly and set up. I want to get the best for the city of Oceanside too, but I don't want to offend every community who doesn't want RDO at 78, and they don't want Melrose extension, and then going over the river up into Morale Hills. I'm kind of listening to the public, the people. I certainly represent you in those neighborhoods. This appears to be a way to circumvent my representation. Will I get angry or mad? No. Will I fight to say no? Yes. There's a difference. With that, I certainly want to finish off by saying thank you that the people showed up today. I certainly hope you pass your opinions on the reporters back there, because sometimes I'm a little concerned that the UT/North County Times endorsed all three of these people. So I'm not sure where the direction goes sometimes when the editorial staff, but we'll see with that. With that, it really comes down to a potential vote, but I also see Mr. Fellain's backup. Mr. Fellain.
Thank you, Mayor. I do, well, you know, certainly it's been a passionate issue, and I have certainly said publicly that one of my complaints with the representation has been that you have not fought to get other members of the council on the, you know, subcommittees on Sandag. I have never had any meeting with the city manager where I claimed I would support you in return for getting two appointments, because there's simply no way that could even be guaranteed. Wanting something isn't getting something. Basically, the representative for Sandag has to get together with four of the representatives, and you haggle, and some people get happy and some are not. There's simply no way you can guarantee the outcome of those meetings in advance, even if the mayor wanted to offer that, he couldn't, so it would be silly for me to ask. So I must politely challenge you to either retract your statement on the meeting or provide some source, because I never had that conversation or made that kind of allusion, so I'd appreciate a correction. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I do appreciate that. Thank you for your time. One last question. If this is voted in today, when do I lose my power as a mayor?
I'm not sure if you call. Do you continue to have that power? In terms of your seat at Sandag, sir, or in terms of appointments?
They can either remove me or put other people in to 30 days.
The ordinance would become effective in 30 days.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And without that, I'm not sure if we have anything else on the agenda. Holly, help me here.
We do need a vote on this item.
Yes, we do, but is there anything else? Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, three to one. Wood, no, and Sanchez, absent.
Thank you. And no other items on this? I'll go ahead and adjourn this, well, adjourn it to 19th. I'll adjourn this meeting to 2 o'clock, Wednesday, December 19th, 2012. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate it.